Okay, folks, we'll get started. We've hit our initial KPI. We seem to be on time. So I'd like to welcome our next participants from Rice Warner. If you could just both state your name and organisation for the purposes of voice recognition for the transcript, and then if you'd like to make some brief opening remarks.
Thank you. Michael Rice.
And Tim Jenkins from Rice Warner.
Yep. So, thank you for agreeing to see us today. We are very interested in the process, and we've made a number of submissions along the way. What we'll do now is I'll hand over to Tim, who's going to make a brief statement about some of our observations on your draft report, and then very free to answer any of your questions.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. So I've pre-prepared a statement which I've provided to you, and I would like to read that statement if I may to you. Thank you for the record. So regardless of whether all your recommendations are legislated, the report's provided a thorough assessment of the super system, and it's really going to help everybody refine and improve the system, so thank you for that. We agree with your analysis of the many deficiencies in our complex super system, particularly the issue of multiple accounts and underperforming funds. However, we're optimistic that many of these issues can be remedied with some key changes. For example, we note the changes made in the recent budget which address the issues of unnecessary life insurance and multiple accounts. What we'd like to do is briefly comment on four aspects of your report. The first one is setting the bar for my super. Your report makes some suggestions which we fully support. The key one is that the original my super hurdle was set too low, and the requirements to maintain a my super licence should be elevated. In setting this standard, though, we caution against using past performance as a key mechanism for eliminating all non-performing products. Your 12-year analysis of annual net returns was for the pre-Fofer and stronger super environment and isn't representative of the my super world. To illustrate, many retail funds allowed employers to select default investment strategies pre-my super. The fund I was with before had 51 different default options pre-my super, and these could vary significantly. Further, my super has led to the removal of commission and reduction of other fees since its introduction. We believe that the my super system needs to be measured over a longer period to prove its worth in delivering value-for-money outcomes for default members. Of course, none of this should delay APRA in removing licences from those who are underperforming and those who show no signs of improvement. While we accept your view that member circumstances are too different to set up a homogenous my retirement product, we do, though, consider my super should also be extended into whole-of-life and retirement. We also believe that the standards for choice products need tightening. Many of these products provide relatively poor value, and consumers will not always understand this due to the known problems of knowledge asymmetry and lack of financial literacy. It would be worthwhile considering the range of choice options to see if any further recommendations could be made. For example, like you, we question whether eligible rollover funds do have an ongoing role, given the consolidation of lost accounts. Secondly, the role of employers in a system based on wages. We agree that the Fair Work Commission process to allocate default funds imposes constraints on the ability of funds to compete for employers and members. If the bar's set higher for my super products, we believe this process of the FWC should be removed. Many larger employers are well-equipped to choose a default fund for their employees. However, the fact is, they can only secure discounts and tailored insurance if the employer plan remains the default. If your recommendations were fully put in place, we could see the demise of employer plans to the detriment of many employees. Thirdly, and very briefly, on the role of life insurance. Really, the question is, what is the role of life insurance? It isn't part of the objectives of a superannuation put forward by the government, yet group insurance is the largest life insurance segment and provides the best value of all insurances when you measure by claims as a percentage of premiums. We support a formal review of whether insurance should be funded through super funds and what structure the benefits should take, and we also support the fact that you've put forward that the insurance in Super Voluntary Code should be turned into a binding and enforceable rules, noting that the government's budget measures will achieve aspects of this. We further note that the budget changes will remove some of the inequities in the system and address some of the Productivity Commission's concerns. And lastly, our views on Best in Show. If introduced immediately, the Best in Show shortlist of 10 my super products could stifle innovation, as a differentiated strategy may not be rewarded. See, the 10 initially selected funds have a significant liquidity and scale advantage over other my super funds, make it difficult for any other my super fund to be chosen in future for the list, potentially encourage funds to chase returns with potential risk if they believe they need a good short-term return to make the list of 10, and finally, prevent new entrants from establishing products that can obtain default status. We note that the number of my super products was initially much fewer than anticipated when the stronger super legislation was passed, and that the number of my super products continues to decline through continued fund mergers. Indeed, the number of my super products that can be selected by public offer and which aren't employer-specific is already only around 65 and trending lower. The Rice Warner Superannuation Market Projections Report last December suggested that the number of funds is likely to halve in the next five years, so by extension, that could be my super potentially of 30 or so available. We consider that it's worthwhile, based on this, strengthening the my super standards and letting the market settle for a period of five years before considering the merits of Best in Show. This will be less disruptive and will allow the industry to address the many issues raised in your report. Thank you.
Great, thanks very much, Tim. We might start with where you left off, and then we'll work our way backwards through your batting order. On the Best in Show, it's kind of interesting. The feedback we seem to be getting is very much about what the implication is for funds and not for members. We've got two objectives with the Best in Show. Best in Show with elevated my super is just meant to make choice simpler and safer, but the Best in Show is really what's meant to make choice simpler for members, whether they be in default or in the choice segment, to have some form of comparable benchmark against which they can compare their product if they're a vanilla accumulation member. So I guess, getting to that issue first, with the elevated my super, you're right, it does a lot of the heavy lifting around the tail, but how, in the absence of a Best in Show, do we make choice simpler for members so we can get a modicum of engagement into the system before people turn 55 and start thinking about retirement? How do we get engagement and competition for default?
Look, I think firstly, if all funds are, by definition, given good value or properly regulated and the bar is high enough, then it doesn't really matter how a member chooses a fund. Wouldn't the market just work itself through in normal conditions? Admittedly, young people are unengaged, and, you know, I think my personal view is, will always be so. I don't think financial literacy is ever going to raise the standard of knowledge of the layperson adequately amongst the masses. So the real goal of government is to make sure that any choice made is a satisfactory one.
So we might set aside the whole choice segment for a moment, because with 40,000 options and given the tale of woe in the choice segment, we know that it's not simple and it's certainly not safe for about half the members.
Yeah.
We actually don't know how many members are in the tale. We know it's one in two products. So how then, in a world of if we've just got an elevated my super, do we get member engagement if it's still not simple? Or you don't think member engagement matters in the default segment until people get closer to retirement?
So can I come? The default market there is for people who do not make a choice. If we move to a model where we're looking to engage more people and they take a fund with them, potentially as they move from job to job, then the thought process behind what you're saying is that there would be less people who are disengaged, so the number of people who would default would be a lot less than is today.
Okay.
So if you have that, there could be an argument that a list of 30 automatically allocated sequentially, if it only is the 30, perhaps is an efficient model to start them on their journey.
Okay. So two thoughts. So the default segment is absent choice by members, you're right, today, but it's not absent choice by employers or the FWC. You've taken FWC out of the equation in your model, and you're going to leave the employers in there making the decision on behalf of members. So then, how do we mitigate the current risks that some employers don't feel capable of making those choices on behalf of members? How do we deal with the conflicts that an employer would naturally have and are unavoidable between their interest to shareholders or their equity versus their interest to their wage earners?
Perhaps the way to answer that is the example from New Zealand, again, from my New Zealand experience, where when Kiwisaver was initially established, and I don't know if that's the case still, employers were able to override the default choice. So an employer could pick their own default for their people if they thought that was the right thing to do, and maybe a small percentage of larger employers chose to do that. So they didn't pick from the list of six.
Okay. So you see a world preferable where the employer's making the choice on behalf of members as opposed to the member making the choice on behalf of members in default?
On entering the workforce.
On entering the workforce, okay. You mentioned risks with how Best in Show might be selected. We set out in a page, not prescriptively but at a high level, what factors we thought that the expert panel should take into account in choosing Best in Show. If they were the principles that were followed, we're not sure how the risks that you've identified would be manifest, if it's long-term net investment performance, if it's investment strategy, if it's products, accumulation and retirement, if it's knowing your member cohort, if it's having good governance, so...
Well, I'll answer one maybe, Michael, the others there. If you were outside Australia introducing a new fund here, how would you get your performance to get onto the list? How would you ever crack the chestnut?
Oh, so we do, we address that completely by saying you can look at comparable net investment performance anywhere, if you're an institutional investor from North America or Europe or whatever.
But if I'm an Amazon or someone coming in afresh, a complete disruptor looking at this, I wouldn't necessarily have that investment performance to come from?
No, that's right. So you'd probably head off into the choice segment where there's more money, and you'd be looking at establishing a track record fairly quickly. But remember, this is the default segment. These are those people with lower balances, and thus we want them to be the exemplar. You would want some semblance of a comparable track record before you'd allow anybody to... So that's the only risk that you see that we don't...
That's not the only risk, eh?
No, I think one of the risks is that people might be a good fund at the time they picked, but might not stay a good fund. But if you end up with a small number, I mean, there are examples, Chile's probably the best example, where over a period of time, the list shortened till, I think there's only one left because everybody competed on fees, and eventually the terms were uncommercial. So there are dangers.
Yeah, no, no. And that's not what we're proposing, and indeed, we use the Chile model to reject another model. But if we're looking just at the contribution flows, it's just new job entrance, and even if you assume with the Best in Show list, a lot of people start switching to the Best in Show. If you look at contributions, so net flows into the system at the moment, new entrants are a billion each year, switching is 2.2 billion, reentrance and turnover is 16.5. So only about 13% of the 150 billion in contributions going into the system each year are kind of like the up for grabs, assuming that everybody who is changing a job or switching then switches to Best in Show.
That's what would happen with a mandatory new entrance, but then if you're Best in Show, you'd have a marketing advantage.
Yep.
So you'd attract people from the established funds as well.
Yep, so we've picked up switching and reentrance and turnover in that 13% of the contributions. So what switching rates are you assuming thus there's a flood of... I mean, we would want some people to move particularly from the choice segment to Best in Show or even to an elevated my super product, but what are you assuming when you say that they'll have this huge economies of scale advantage during that four-year period when we specifically chose new job entrants and looked at the switching numbers within the system to try to think about? We wanted to create a competitive dynamic each four years that would see competition remain within the system as opposed to, as some people have suggested, creating a cozy oligopoly, albeit it's not a cozy oligopoly.
Well, who knows? Again, Kiwisaver is perhaps one of the closest ones to look at. The advantage provided to the six funds who were the default funds was pretty significant, and those have had a competitive advantage because of net funds flow and everything that has come from there. They have been able to perform better because of Best in Show.
Yeah, and we spent a week in New Zealand understanding that system, Tim, and I think some of the differences were, it's not compulsory in New Zealand, it is here. Much smaller market, fewer players. We've got a very different market structure here. Anyway, I won't, I think that's been helpful in terms of understanding your thoughts around Best in Show. My super, coming back to your batting order now, the my super default for retirement, we had a lengthy discussion with Jeremy about this this morning. You're obviously familiar with the work that Treasury's doing. I guess the key question for us around SIPA in retirement is what form of advice you would see as accompanying those decisions?
We gave a submission to Treasury recently, and we're happy to send you a copy of that. Our personal view, our house view, is that a SIPA should be mandatory because otherwise the level of take-up would be very low for a number of reasons. Firstly, people don't naturally buy longevity products. Secondly, they need financial advice, and if they have to pay for it, it'll be a much easier option to just pick an option that doesn't need advice, like the equivalent my super asset allocation. So it's interesting that there is...
So when you say mandatory, is this mandatory for a fund to offer it, Michael? Or is this mandatory for a member?
No, if it's going to work, it's mandatory for a percentage of your account balance at retirement to be placed in a SIPA. Else, we don't think it will work.
What about a member with a low balance where it doesn't make sense for them?
Well, it may or may not make sense, but the fact is, it's probably easier to have a system where you've set some rules around our SIPA, it's part of our default structure, and if you don't want it, you can opt out. If you want a SIPA to work, you need to get the numbers to make the mortality pool.
So you're talking about a soft default then, on an opt-out basis?
Yes. I mean, there's a real problem with retirement. Everybody who retires has to fill out a new form to join a new fund, even if it's a continuation of the vehicle they're in. So it would be a lot easier if we could move more of a defaulting structure into retirement as well. And that might simply be continuation of the my super investment strategy with some intra-fund advice about what you should do to ensure that it's appropriate for yourself. Take your point that retirement's not homogenous. Everybody's individual circumstances vary, but if you don't have something as a structure, people won't have a benchmark to work against. So you'll just end up with a choice mortgage board again.
And do you nominate what level of longevity, what percentage of any balance should be part of or mandated to go into longevity if you did default?
That's the thought, yes. We had a figure in mind of about 15%, something like that, of your account balance, with exemptions for those with smaller account balances.
Sticking with my super for a moment and then looking at it for my super authorisation, we've gone from scale test to elevated outcomes test with the government proposing legislation, and we welcome that. We think it's a step in the right direction. We've just added, we've bolstered it further with some of our recommendations around my super authorisation. One aspect which isn't meant to be the binary driving force is going forward for my super-authorised product. If you haven't, if you've underperformed materially your own portfolio benchmark, so adjusted for your own asset allocation, have you been able to meet or not meet the market over a five-year period going forward, and you've missed it by 25 bits consistently across those five years? I just want to try to understand your concern, given it's just one component part of the outcomes test. We saw that as an insurance policy of making sure that going forward, the tail didn't reemerge.
You said five years, and five years would be better than 10 or 12, because it's the period pre-2013 where we have most issues with looking at the comparisons going back in time.
But if it's your own portfolio benchmark, it's just whether or not you outperform the market. So if it's your asset allocation and there's a market event, the benchmark moves with the market.
But the funds haven't moved that way. The actual products that are there, some industry funds obviously rebadged, but for many other funds, the retail funds, they're actually new portfolios with new style investments and new benchmarks, and it'd be very difficult indeed to actually go back and reconstruct what that benchmark outperformance would have been.
So we're saying APRA to it going forward, you've got an investment strategy with an asset allocation, here's your portfolio benchmark, you have your own individual portfolio benchmark for that product, you persistently underperform it over five years, why should you continue with my super authorisation?
I'm not saying that you should or anything, it's fine.
I don't think they're disagreeing with this sort of point, no.
We're not disagreeing.
Oh, no.
We disagree with the past, pre-2013.
Oh, so the misunderstanding. No, 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 no. So we're saying this, so it's all perspective. We're proposing it from...
Yeah, so we were looking at the figures in your report when you were looking at underperformance, which went 12 years.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, should have shushed me up earlier, Ange.
No, it's all right. I thought maybe there was something I'd got wrong after this. I think employers agreed to hear.
No, no, you were all right, I wasn't, so that's good.
Hence the idea that if you leave the Best in Show for five years, you'll manage a 10-year my super track record to review.
I think we're at counterprefaces of Best in Show versus my super authorisation. So let's move on to another question. Let's go to insurance. You mentioned that the budget measures went a lot of the way that you thought that was needed around insurance. Couple of other areas that we've looked at in our report. Firstly, the role of income protection and the role of TPD in an NDIS world, which the budget doesn't address.
Firstly, NDIS is provision of services rather than income, so it is slightly different. It goes back to the issue of what is the objective of insurance? You know, there's a lot of complexity. Insurance is good because people get it more efficiently, they don't need to be underwritten, which brings people in, owed it or not get it. And we know that if you look at the retail insurance market before mandatory superannuation, the majority of people didn't buy insurance. So the old adage is they'll insure their house and their car but not themselves is true. So this is beneficial, provided it's delivered fast effectively. And largely it is, but there are obviously some areas which need tweaking, and I think the budget's gone a long way towards looking at that.
So to answer on the income protection there, if the objective of a super includes something like that, then we think super's a fantastic place for income protection. It's a very valuable benefit. But it is expensive unless you redesign waiting periods at older ages. It can be very, very expensive, so the question would be inside or outside the super rather than is income protection a valuable benefit?
And we do improve income protection to some extent by getting rid of unintended multiple accounts, because that's where they can, one of the sources of them being the bad zombies. But how then does the trustee board make sure that it is, income protection is value for money? What sort of data and what understanding of their cohort would they need to be really able to satisfy that test?
As it happens at the moment, I mean, income protection is a better design than a lump sum benefit, but a lump sum benefit's much easier to offer. But it's all or nothing, you're either TPD or you're not. One of the difficulties with income protection is that it can cover multiple benefits over your career because you can come back to work. It's actually quite difficult to manage. We question whether funds have the capacity through their administration to do it properly. They've obviously beefed up, but many of the industry fund benefits are only for two-year benefit periods. You can argue that income protection, to be realistic, should cover right up to retirement. But once you do that, the cost goes up significantly. And the issue, so one of our thoughts is perhaps there should be an objective of superannuation, especially earmarked, you know, 1% of salary to pay for it, and then it's a secondary issue as to where it's administered.
So going the cap route from the perspective of the member?
From a default point of view, yes. If you feel the SG is not enough, and obviously the Labour Party and many others want it to rise, then earmarking a significant part of that to insurance is going to take away from retirement, but it doesn't mean that it's not valuable. It's a question of what's affordable and where's the trade-off.
Yeah, and that's really all we're trying to do in this inquiry. We think there are bigger questions about insurance and super that were sort of outside our terms of reference, such that we suggested a more holistic review in a couple of years' time. Thus, the industry's got a little bit of window with the regulators to get their house in order and see what value for money members are getting now. The other, we touched on this before with a previous inquiry participant, I'm not sure if you were here, around how we deal with the under-25s, those that may not be getting value for money from any of the insurance policies, but they're certainly providing value for money for those above the age of 25 by them being in the risk pool. And I should have said earlier on, sorry, you know, thank you again for all the help that Bryce Warner's given us through all the three stages, Michael and Tim, and particularly on insurance, where you've done a lot of good work that we drew and leveraged upon. There seems to be a model now suggesting that if we take out the under-25s, the cost for the rest of the members in insurance will go by about 26% in terms of higher premiums. And what's now being suggested to us is why don't you just keep the under-25s in there but have a much more smaller vanilla product for them that's cheaper, $30 or $40 a year, and thus you wouldn't get this 26% premium increase?
Well firstly, we've surveyed the big group insurers, primarily A&amp;T, and they've told us that they're expecting a 15% increase, which I would put at the upper range. So our view is it'll be 5 to 10. We know that Australian Super came out with no coverage for under-25s, and their premiums went down for 98% of their members. So not everybody has cross subsidies. There are, they do exist, we're not quite sure of the extent, but the reality is, if they're across subsidies, then that's irrelevant to say that rates are going to go up because effectively that's going to happen anyway when you fix the system. The issue for under-25s, most of the people that die under 25, about 90% of them, don't leave a dependent, so you could argue that the benefit's not necessary. We believe in rural and regional areas, that can grow as much as 20%. People marry earlier in some places. But, so really, for life insurance, we think it's a good trade-off to cut it out, under-25. Disability's more difficult because obviously that's not age-based, and it's not based on the number of dependents you have either. So that is a challenge, and, but it's interesting that some companies, or sorry, some of the super funds have already started looking at their past claims experience and picking an age. So I think C+ picked age 20, H+ picked 19. So they're all looking at, you know, where would there be little damage if we changed? And perhaps where could we deliver better value? I think the issue of income protection for young people is not resolved by cutting it out, but I'm not quite sure how you fix it, short of just having disability cover and no death cover.
The other wrinkle we've got in a world where we're trying to make the system simpler and safer is less products geared to a particular workforce, because we know from the metrics today that when folk turn over jobs now, they're above 50% will actually move to a different industry sector. So they're moving around industry sectors, they're not staying in long periods of time. But the only argument that we've come across for tailored insurance still being needed by an industry sector is the high-risk areas like construction. Have you given any thought to what, if we're trying to make insurance better value for money, more affordable, more vanilla, members can move across different industry sectors over time and move between insurance products, how do we deal with that small cohort of the high-risk construction workers?
It's actually quite a large cohort, the vulnerable members. Many insurers will provide a lower level of cover for casual employees, non-permanent, as well as those in higher-risk industries or low premiums even, depending on the industry that you're in. I guess the concern is, if you are in one of those industries where you're a super fund that caters especially for the abattoir workers, say, whoever it might be, they won't be able... that caters especially for the abattoir workers, say, whoever it might be, they won't be able to get insurance elsewhere. It will really prohibit their ability to be insured for the, of a valuable benefit available for them. So the, the different benefit provided for them through the group insurance is something they could not get on an individual basis, and therefore to take it away based on that would be quite tricky.
But is that only when they're approaching it as, as an individually underwritten proposition? If it's a my superised, my super product and it's the default segment, you're defaulting into the insurance product.
But you can default into no insurance.
So it's unaffordable. But if the higher-risk member is part of a larger pool that's a mixed pool with white-collar workers and the rest of it, and they're just defaulted into it, if it's not an individual underwrite, wouldn't they stand to benefit from that?
They might, but it might be the expense of the other workers there choosing to opt out of those funds and take their own SMS Air Force, you know, go a different route. You might actually drive out the good lives by that behaviour.
In the default segment where people aren't exercising choice? Okay.
Particularly if premiums vary by funds, and the good lives will be the ones that cannot opt out.
Yep.
We're already at time.
Are we? Okay, one quick last question if I may.
I wouldn't mind one as well, but anyway, you go first.
Oh, you go first. Then I'll be talking.
I'm just a bit concerned about the role you see for employers going forward, because I can see from your point of view, you're talking about larger employers being well-equipped, and I think we would agree with that, that there's quite a number of large employers. But we also hear that there's a lot of, very vast majority of small employers who are absolutely not well-equipped and do not want to make this choice. And one of the reasons for members, us trying to get members more engaged and put their onus on the member making the choice is that we feel that most employers, it's not their job, financial advice is not their job, they don't want the job and they don't see that they're expert in it, they don't feel they should have to become expert in it, so they won't. And so we've just got a concern around the ongoing role of employers in this space. And I see that your model sees them having an ongoing and probably even a heightened role if you got rid of the FWC. So I just wondered if you want to respond to that.
What I'm saying is that's a role for employers who choose to take that route, not those who don't want to. So we're actually supporting your process of the allocation of members when they join the workforce.
Oh, okay. So the employee would still choose, but you would still give a role for employees where they wanted one?
The employer is able to override if it sees it can bring economy of scale and some special benefits to its employees whilst they're...
And Tim, when you say override, because we did have some very carefully crafted language in our report and chapter about what role employers and unions, where they do feel they're able to get a better deal for their members. When you say override, what do you mean by that? How would the employer, so say in our, in our world, a member has gone into a best-in-show or they've chosen an elevated my super, they've gone to employer A, employer A said, we've actually got a better deal going with another super fund for our workforce, we'd like you to join it, here's what you can get and here's what, is it offering them choice, the member, or is it an override?
Well, perhaps I can... The issue is if it's a large employer and they may subsidise the plan, they may have staff that deal with employee benefits, they may pay for the fees or insurance or some part of them, then they clearly could give a good outcome, provided the fund itself is properly authorised and APRA is comfortable that it meets the bar. But if you took that away, that fund would quickly become diluted. And, you know, if all new members joined a different, one of the best-in-show funds, over time that employer fund would lose its scale, and the employer might then decide that it's not worth continuing. So it's a philosophical issue. Should there be an employer fund or not, I guess is the issue.
I guess based on the evidence that we could grapple there, Michael, we were detecting that that was an area that employers were exiting playing a role. And, and what was elevating was the problem scenario that Angela's identified. But if you've got evidence to suggest that there's a whole bunch of big employers out there who want to go gangbusters about providing support, getting better deals for their members, we'd love to get it because we haven't got that information. We really struggle to get sort of the corporate discount story. It's not out there openly and transparently for us to get a handle.
No, there's a significant number, even fairly small funds, as sub-lan's of master trust or industry funds that offer extra benefits.
And I guess we then need to distinguish offering extra benefits on top of they're in a top-performing fund.
Yeah.
As opposed to offering extra benefits on a, an underperforming or an average performing fund.
Yeah, I'm sure we can get you something on that.
And of course, the my super legislation does permit the employer scale discount, and it's put there for a reason, coming through.
Yep. So in a world of an elevated my super, where they're good products, which they aren't today or all said, how you could make that happen without it being sort of a form of compulsion for the employee?
Yeah.
Which we kind of tried to get to in the report, maybe you could give us a bit more guidance as to how we could do that in a way that's readily implemented. Because we don't want to, don't want to stop employers from doing the right things where they want to. Yeah. Okay. Is there anything else that we haven't asked you that we should have asked you, or is there anything that you wanted to say that we haven't allowed you to say?
No, I think it's very comprehensive, and I'm looking forward to a final copy, which presumably will come out before the end of the year sometime.
Perfect. And we look forward to getting your, your post-draft report submission to us.
Okay.
That'd be great. Thanks so much. Sorry for my misinterpretation earlier, Tim.
No problem, sir.
Okay, folks, we're going to take a luxurious 15-minute break to have the best instant coffee that Sydney has to offer outside, and we'll resume at 10:45. Thanks.
At a time, you know, at a time. Do you think that's what you want, actually?
I could see it.
How are you? Good to see you.
That's good.
Yeah, it's good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do that.
That's very good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you for your help along the sidelines with Mike.
Ah, yes.
Thank you.
That'd be great.
We will, we will.
That's great.
Thanks guys.
All right. Thanks, mate.
Thank you.
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 Thank you.